This time we'll call the Tuesday, September 6, 2011, meeting of the Iredale County Board of Commissioners to order. I'll leave us an invocation if you would pray with us this evening, please. Heavenly Father, once again, we just consider it a pleasure to come into your presence and make our petitions known, and this evening, as always, we ask you for wisdom, that you will guide our thoughts and our actions. Lord, we may do that which would please you and best serve the citizens of our county, for without your help, we admit, we're totally incapable of that. So we beseech you, as humbly as we know how, you'd impart that wisdom to us. We ask that in Jesus' name and for his sake. Amen.
Join us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag, please.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mr. Smith, are there any adjustments of the agenda from the staff this evening?
Mr. Chairman, we've got three adjustments tonight. The representative from the Allison Woods Foundation cannot be here tonight, so therefore the appointment before the board needs to be removed. And we have two additions. One is from ICATS, and this is a request for permission to accept ARA funds to convert four fleet vehicles to propane fuel, and that would be item G. And then item H is a request from the Sheriff's Office for a budget amendment to move $35,000 from the commissary fund to lease the Ebenezer School facility. And those are the only adjustments.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Are there any adjustments coming from any member of the board? If not, I move we adopt this agenda as amended. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, under presentation of special recognitions and awards this evening, we're honored to make a presentation in regard to a proclamation proclaiming September 17 through the 23rd, 2011, as Constitution Week in Iredale County. And we're going to present this proclamation to the daughters of the American Revolution Organization, but I'll read the proclamation before we do so. It says proclamation for Constitution Week 2011. Whereas September 17, 2011, marks the 224th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States for the designation of Constitution Week. Now therefore, the Iredale County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim September 7 through 23rd, 2011, to be Constitution Week in Iredale County, North Carolina, and respectfully request our citizens to reaffirm the ideals that the framers of the Constitution had in 1787, this on the sixth day of September, 2011, and I sign by myself Stephen D. Johnson, Chairman. At this point, I'm going to ask Ms. Jane Cook and Ms. Dorothy Worthington from the Daughters of the American Revolution to come forward and receive this proclamation from the Board of Commissioners, please. On behalf of the Board of Commissioners, I want to present you ladies with this proclamation. We want to thank you for all you do here in Iredale County and our community through preserving our heritage and reminding us of the values and the foundations of our great republic, and we thank you very much for your hard work.
Well, thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. It's an honor to present you with that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Pardon? I'll read the preamble. This time I'll read the preamble to the Constitution of the United States of America as requested by Ms. Cook. We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity, do ordain and establish this Constitution for the United States of America. And thank you, ladies, again, for all you do in representing the bedrock of our republic. We appreciate it very much. This point, we'll declare the meeting to be in a public hearing in regard to case number 1108-1. This is a consideration of a rezoning request from owner applicant M. Douglas Davidson to rezone 48.67 acres from R. 20, Single Family Residential District, to R. A. Residential Agricultural District. The location of the property is 540 Mock Mill Road, Statesville, North Carolina. Mr. Allison, we're glad to have you with us this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As stated, this request is to rezone 48 acres along Mock Mill Road from R. 20, which is a single-family residential, to R. A. Residential Agricultural District. The owner is identified as M. Douglas Davidson, property located on Mock Mill Road just west of Benfield Road. The surrounding land use is residential with I-40 located to the north of this property. The existing land use is residential and farming. This property has been rezoned, has been zoned R. 20 since 1991. It was rezoned from R. A. as part of a non-owner rezoning request and included 101 parcels and approximately 600 acres at that time. In 2001, 530 acres that adjoins the property was rezoned from R. A. to R. 20, and the R.U.R. area in the northwest was rezoned from R. A. in 1999. I'm going to show you a couple of maps here real quickly. Here's the property in question. Here was a rezoning non-owner application from '91, and as you can see, there's some more R. 20 in the general vicinity and some R.U.R. just north. The site is designated as a low-density residential on the 2030 Horizon Plan. The proposed R.A. district fits into the low-density residential designation. The planning staff can support the proposed request based on the following: the district is in compliance with the 2030 plan, the property is located along the interstate and adjoins the R.A. district on two sides, and the proposed use and permitted uses in the R.A. district should not have a negative impact on the surrounding area. Mr. Chairman, on August 3, the planning board voted nine to zero to recommend approval of this request based on the consistency with the 2030 Horizon Plan. If you should happen to have any questions at this time, I'll be glad to try and answer them. If you'd like to take a look at a couple other photos, we'll just look at the property a little closer here. This is your aerial view identifying the property. It's primarily woods. Here's a view of it looking east on Mock Mill. This is across the street. Another view across the street. And then here we are looking west on Mock Mill Road. Let's go back to the original.
Chair, any questions, Mr. Allison?
Has there been any opposition from anyone in the community?
I think, Ms. Riffith, there was a lady that appeared before the planning board, and I think primarily she had a question concerning the request. I'm not sure whether there's anyone here tonight, but I think that was a question more than opposition.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Allison said his purpose for the request, he possibly would like to build a kennel there in the future.
That's correct. Primarily, the request is for dog grooming, but the R.A. district does allow for kennels with grooming.
And as far as keeping pets overnight, is that also permissible in R.A.?
It is with the kennels. Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, this is a public hearing. If there are no other questions, Mr. Allison will afford anyone else here who'd like to speak in regard to this, either pro or con. If not, I declare the public hearing closed, and the floor is open for discussion or a motion at your pleasure. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval for the change. Okay. Motion for approval from Mr. Mitchell. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Smith, I believe that brings us to administrative matters, doesn't it?
It does. Mr. Chairman, William Allison has the next request. It's a request to call for a public hearing to release zoning jurisdiction to the town of Mooresville.
Mr. Chairman, our department has recently received a request from James F. Martin with Crescent Resources for a release of zoning and subdivision jurisdiction to the town of Mooresville. The subject parcel is located on Forest Lake Boulevard at Brooly School Road. The proposed use of the property under the town of Mooresville's jurisdiction is a single-family residential subdivision with 140 to 180 homes on an 88-acre tract. They're requesting the release in order to get water and sewer from the town of Mooresville due to an unfavorable soil characteristics on the property for septic systems. The release would allow the development to begin sooner rather than having to wait until they're annexed in June of 2012. The town has approved an extension of water and sewer, and a voluntary annexation petition has been filed. Mr. Chairman, this is basically the first step in the process, and we would respectfully request that the board set a public hearing for October 4. Of course, if you have any questions on this, I'll be glad to try and answer them.
Any questions, Mr. Allison?
Mr. Smith, you said homes, not mobile homes, right?
That's correct. Single-family residential homes.
If we refuse this request, they could continue to proceed. It would just be a matter of annexation would occur, what, next July?
I believe it's late June. That's correct. They would, I would anticipate that that would continue further.
Okay. There's no further questions. The floor is open for a motion. The request is to call for a public hearing.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we request a public hearing on October 4 for the Forest Lake Boulevard redistricting, or, sorry, rezoning quest.
Okay. Do you need a discussion on that motion? Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Memo number five is a request from the Harmony Volunteer Fire Department for approval of a budget amendment number seven in an amount up to $150,000 for the purchase of an aerial truck. And Ronnie Thompson will give that presentation.
Okay. Here tonight to request for Harmony Fire Department for up to $150,000 for an aerial unit. And if you have any questions, we have the Chairman of the Fire Tax Board and the Chief of the Harmony Fire Department here.
Okay. All right. Any questions? Mr. Thompson?
Will this fire truck be available to other fire departments in the area?
Mr. Chairman, the Fire Comit, the Fire Tax Commission discussed this at length, and it was unanimous vote on it. The Harmony Fire Department, they've got two structures in their district that we hope will never need an aerial truck, but one of them is the rendering plant for Tyson, and also have the million-square-foot Lowe's Distribution Center, and that's in their district. They have made a trip to Connecticut to look at a truck. I think it was $50,000. They were trying to save money. Got up there, and it was nothing but a rust bucket. So they came back, and the city of Richmond is, I think they're getting rid of four trucks at one time. They're trading them in, and they said this one is like new, except a brand-new truck would cost over $800,000. So this aerial truck is in like-new condition, would last Harmony and all of North Iredale for many, many years, and hopefully they never need the thing. But there have been several silo fires up there that they've had to get help from Statesville to bring water out with an aerial truck to put them out. So I think they're, they've been very frugal in shopping. They've been looking for a long time. They found one they're very pleased with, and I think that we, we should go along with it.
It'll be, my understanding, it'll be housed at the Harmony Station? Is that correct?
Yes, sir, it will be.
And it'll be accessible to anybody else as they need it? The one question I had, though, Mr. Thompson, if it's housed at Harmony, will it contribute to an improved ISO rating for other fire departments in that area? Is that, if one of you gentlemen would come forward and address that, please?
I'll let Trent do it, then.
Yes, sir. It'll be able to be used by all of our surrounding departments in a signed mutual aid agreement.
I'm not taking exception to what you say. Just, I want to make sure I understand the answer. When you say surrounding, are you talking about Union Grove? You talk, how about Central?
Union Grove, Central, County Line, Long Hickory, Sherfield, Callahan.
Wilkes-Iraele.
Wilkes-Iraele. We can sign mutual aid agreements with them, also Ebenezer.
But would you have, necessarily, you would have to have a mutual aid agreement in place for them to benefit from the ISO rating?
Yes, sir. As we, we already have mutual aid agreements in place with all those departments, so it'd just fall into that same.
You wouldn't have to do any amendment to it?
No, sir.
Does the equipment have to be organic to the department to get credit for it, or can they get credit for it if it's just, they have access to it through mutual aid agreements?
Yes, they can receive credit as long as it's through mutual aid agreement.
Okay. Okay, good. Okay.
I've got two questions. May seem silly, but there've been a time or two when we wished they were asked. This truck will fit inside your building?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Matter of fact, we had trampments in it the other day just to make sure.
Good work.
Okay. Good answer. Then the next one, just, you know, on one hand, if you buy a used one, you save a whole lot of money on the purchase price compared to buying a used one.
Mm-hmm.
But then when somebody who is selling you the used one says, well, this is just as good as a new one, yet he's turning it in to go buy a new one, why were the sellers selling it if it was just as good as a new one?
Richmond, being a city that they are, from what the captain told me, they rotate their stock about every 10 to 12 years.
Okay.
No matter what the mileage is on it, no matter what the use is on it. And before we take possession of the truck, if we're approved, it'll have to pass an aerial certification test and also a pump certification test, and anything that does not pass that test, Richmond City is responsible for fixing.
And who conducts that test?
Certified mechanics, four peers.
Okay. For the manufacturer of the truck itself?
Yes, sir.
All right. Okay. Any sort of warranty go with it, or?
No, sir.
No? That's it. If it can pump, when y'all pull it out of the parking lot, it's good to go?
If it can pump and pass aerial test, which is the two biggest things that can't go wrong with one.
Roger that. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
When will you take possession of the truck?
Right now, Richmond told me, and the salesman that we're dealing with, said it could be as early as mid-October, as late as the 1st of November.
Any other questions, these gentlemen?
Just one last one from Mr. Phillips, since I saw him back there. No good deed goes unpunished, right? With what's left in our, the funds for fire trucks and stuff, I mean, this takes your balance down some. How close are we, or how far away are we from having reason to be concerned that we're letting the money, you know, the financial situation?
I understand what you're asking.
Are we getting close to the edge by the purpose, by the purchase of this truck? Sorry for being tongue-tied.
Well, at present, we have a little over $1 million. It is from our fire tax revenue. It is located in the debt service fund, and that's where we would like to take this $150,000 from. So then it'd bring it down to $850 and change remaining. But over the year, you know, we may or may not have use for some of that money, but we will be requesting that it come out of debt service.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
But just, just to make sure, Mr. Phillips, aren't tents to pay for this truck upon delivery, though, right?
Yes. They've already given a $7,000 deposit.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
If not, floor is open for a motion. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of budget amendment number seven for Harmony Fire Department. Okay. Motion for approval from Mr. Mitchell. Any discussion? Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you all. Who gets to drive the truck back? Told the guys they could drive it all the way, but I got to drive it back into Harmony. Memo number six is a request for approval to amend the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act grant project ordinance that we're currently working under, and Lynn Niblock, our Director of Code Enforcement and Special Projects, will make that presentation.
Good evening. What I have before you tonight is we finally received final approval from the Department of Energy for the last three activities that we, excuse me, had listed under the ARRA grant award that we received about a year ago. And what the request tonight is, is to recognize and amend the project ordinance to recognize those additionally approved activities and to allow us to use enforced labor to install the programmable thermostats, which is one of the activities that have been approved. The three activities that were specifically approved by the Department of Energy was some HVAC retrofits for several of the county buildings, and the thermostats, programmable thermostats, and an additional year's salary for the energy coordinator position. And the total of all that, as you can see on the memo that I attached, is $178,058. There's also a rebates that have been received from some of the lighting upgrades that we've already done, $8,624 in rebates that you also need to recognize as part of this amended project ordinance as well, and if anyone has any questions, I'll be glad to try to address them.
Okay. Any questions, Ms. Niblock?
I have to ask this question as a, as an engineer and also as a federal taxpayer. That is, we've been, we've been spending federal money, not county money, to do this project using our underutilized inspections staff to do it. Is the, the county taxpayer doesn't have any skin in the game, so to speak, or has very little, I guess. We pay the benefits for these folks. But as a, are the federal taxpayers getting their money's worth out of this? Are we actually saving any money yet?
Well, we've done, we've completed the energy or the lighting upgrades, and we're starting to get enough data where hopefully before too long, I can bring a report before the board to show you some savings. But yes, we are experiencing some savings from the lighting outfit. We haven't, have not addressed any of the HVAC equipment, but we should show some additional energy savings from that. Same thing is true of the programmable thermostats. It will allow us to set back the temperatures, excuse me, in the buildings at night and on weekends when they're not in use, and thereby reduce our energy consumption there, and...
Are we not doing that already?
We have some buildings that have programmable thermostats. We have some that do not. We are in the ones that have the programmable thermostats, but we have quite a few buildings that do not have the programmable thermostats.
And they can't be manually set down or up on the weekends as the case may be?
Well, yes, I suppose they could if someone would remember to do it. But the nice thing about the programmable thermostats is you, you don't have the human error factor there. You program it, turns it back, brings it back up early enough in the morning to either heat or cool the building, depending on what season we're in, where it's comfortable when the people come to work.
I'd like to see as a, as a matter of, we don't have to have policy, we don't have to vote on anything here, but if we, if it's within the ability of, you know, of our folks to turn, to adjust the thermostat for long weekends and holidays or whatever, to save some energy, even if they're not programmable, I mean, I've got a teenage son, he even knows how to turn the thermostat up or down, you know, when he leaves the house. Every little, every little bit counts, so...
It does, and we have found a few other things that we've been able to save some money that's kind of come from doing the energy audits on the building. For instance, we found a water meter at the Government Center South, a four-inch water meter, that was way oversized for our needs down there. We've been paying a facility charge on that meter for a number of years. We had it changed out by the town of Mooresville to a two-inch meter. It's going to save us somewhere between $4,000 and $5,000 a year on the facility charge. We consolidated some HVAC equipment down there on one gas meter, got rid of another gas meter that's going to save somewhere in the neighborhood of $4,000 a year on facility charges.
The HVAC retrofits, is that removing, removing existing units with higher efficiency units?
It is.
Is there some sort of a delta that, that, you know, if it's slightly more efficient, you're not going to replace it? But if it's a big difference that you do, that way we're not swapping out a pretty darn good air conditioner for a really good air conditioner?
Right. What we did, in conjunction with the energy audits, which was part of the pre-approved activities under this program, is we identified all the different equipment on all the county facilities, the age, the SEER rating or the efficiency rating, and obviously, there's not enough money here to address all the county facilities, so we looked at the ones where the oldest equipment and the least efficient equipment are located, and those are the ones that we've targeted.
Okay. So there is a method to the madness and some priority to get the biggest bang for our buck. It's important that we not appear that we're, that we're paying folks to dig one hole and then fill it up. So I really, I encourage you to, let's keep track of what we're doing, and then let's report back to the taxpayers of, did they get their money's worth? Again, even if it's not killing... Again, e- even if it's not county money that did it. It, it's something that we as a country need to start asking. That this money isn't free money, it's still our money, it just came from a, a different hole in our pocket. And, uh, and we need to, we need to be accountable for it, so.
No, I, I certainly understand, and I certainly agree with you. And we have filled out a considerable amount of paperwork with the Department of Energy, so there is a lot of accountability for how the money is being spent.
I, I notice how it's being spent, I, what, what I'm concerned about is, did it have the desired effect? You know, in, in industry, you can spend thirty thousand, you know, you can spend an amount of money, what they're looking for is a three-year payback.
Right.
Now they're looking for less than a three-year payback. But over, you know, the several decades that I've been working, at different times, people would take a three-year payback or a five-year payback. But if you went, you said, "I've got a really good idea to spend money, but there's a twelve-year payback." For the most part, they said, "That's not a good use of our money." I'm just kind of curious as to what sort of a payback the, the taxpayers are getting for this, for this program. For the federal taxpayers are getting for this program. Thank you very much, sir.
Go ahead.
Okay, so the request is to amend the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act grant project ordinance to recognize approved activities by the Department of Energy, to recognize the rebate revenue and to authorize the usage of current staff to provide the energy upgrades. So that's the request.
Still move, Mr. Chairman?
Motion for approval from Mr. Robertson. If there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Memo number seven is a request to call for a public hearing on September twentieth, two thousand and eleven, to obtain citizen comments and input on the two thousand and eight Community Development Block Grant. And this is the Providencia USA Railspur Project. And if it sounds familiar, it is. Back on, uh, August sixteenth, we held the public hearing for this. Through a mistake that was not our own, uh, we're going to have to hold it again. It was an advertising problem. We received verification that we, um, that our advertisement was going to run on August third. However, they inputted it, or they inserted it, uh, as August thirty-first, and it never did run. So we didn't legally advertise for the public hearing, so we have to go through the, the process again.
Okay, so we'll do it again. Okay? Floor is open for a motion. The request you have is to call for a public hearing on September twentieth.
Motion to approve public hearing.
Alright, motion from Vice Chairman Norman, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Memo number eight is a request from the Solid Waste Department for approval of a resolution exempting the remainder of Phase Five, of the Phase Five's five project from the requests for quotes and qualifications and approve, and approval of a professional services engineering agreement with Municipal Engineering Services. And this can be presented by David Lambert and Dean Lael.
Good evening. Planting for solid waste site development takes place in five-year cycles as cells or phases are designed for five years' waste capacity. State operating permits are valid for five years as well. Basically, as soon as a new cell or phase is constructed, planning starts for the next one. Process for Phase Five started in two thousand and eight with site suitability study and proceeded in two thousand and ten with the hydrology study, which included installation of groundwater monitoring wells, sampling and collecting data. The collected data is analyzed and used to prepare design drawings, which will be submitted to NC DNR in a request for permit to construct. This was anticipated to be done in two thousand and eleven and has been budgeted accordingly. Construction's anticipated for fiscal year two thousand and twelve, thirteen. This is all part of an ongoing process leading up to the goal of obtaining a permit to operate. Mesco, or Municipal Engineering Services Company, was selected to provide solid waste services to the county through an RFQ process in two thousand and six and began assisting the county in locating additional land for waste disposal shortly thereafter. The land known as the steel property was purchased, and Mesco performed environmental assessment and site suitability, hydrology study and now direct to design portion of the project. In order to avoid unnecessary delay and expense, it's recommended that Mesco be allowed to continue all work leading up to and obtaining a permit to construct and the permit to operate. Dean Lael from County Purchasing has recommended this project is eligible to be and should be exempted from the RFQ process outlined in General Statute one forty-three, sixty-four point thirty-one, known as the Mini Brooks Act by virtue of one forty-three, sixty-four point thirty-two, paragraph B, which states, "Other particular projects exempted in the sole discretion of the Department of Transportation or unit of local government stating the reasons therefore and circumstances attendant thereto." It's important to note that the Mini Brooks Act expressly prohibits requesting accepting minimum bids for this type of service. This recommendation's being made on the basis of the highly complex nature of design and permitting of solid waste facilities. Mesco has performed these services for previous phases of the current land. Feeling familiar with the overall design and plans of the facility. Allowing a new firm to step in at the midway point of the project would almost undoubtedly lead to additional expense and delay. I'm requesting your approval of a resolution allowing the exemption of the remainder of the project from the RFQ process and approval of an engineering services agreement with Mesco for obtaining a permit to construct with a not-to-exceed cost of one hundred and twenty-five thousand and finally culminating with seeking a permit to operate. In order to be fiscally conservative, solid waste and finance staff have traditionally requested funds as portions of the work is commenced and have budgeted accordingly in those specific years instead of requesting a total amount upfront. Therefore, a services agreement for permit to operate will be presented at a later date. And then the next phase, Phase Six, will be a separate project and will be subject to the RFQ process. So, the, the, um, request I've got before you is actually a two-part request, asking for the exemption resolution to be approved and approval of the engineering services agreement to obtain the permit to construct.
I could be in, in favor, but I've got a request. We paid a fortune for that land. I don't care if we call it Mount Norman or Mitchell Ridge or Johnson Valley or Mashburn's Crossroads, but the Steels don't own it anymore. It's not the Steel Property anymore. I don't care what we call it, but we paid, we paid for it. I don't want it to sound like it was a donation, because it, because it wasn't. We need to come up with some other way to refer to that land. No offense to the Steel Family at all.
Mr. Lambert, it's been a while since I've had personal contact with anybody from Municipal Engineering. When I did, I always had a lot of confidence in them, but I think some of the folks that were probably running that place were, they were getting a little age on when I dealt with them, and there's been some turnover, but you still have a higher level of confidence in these folks.
Well, actually Jimmy Woody and Wayne Sullivan, the people you probably knew, they're still there, and they've brought on some young people that are very bright and ambitious. Yeah, we feel pretty good about them.
Mr. Smith, is it your interpretation that we have the authority to grant this based on this GS one forty-three dash sixty-four point three-one and three-two?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions?
Just, just one other unsolicited statement. When all is said and done, when my years on this board are over, I still say that the, that the lasting, probably greatest, most, uh, forward-thinking thing that this board's ever done since I've been on it was securing the land around our current facility that's, that's going to prevent us having to build a second solid waste facility in the county, which would have been an absolute nightmare. And the fact that, that we've secured enough land that guarantees that we've got a place to safely and in a, in a very hygienic way to dispose of our waste for years and years to come is probably something that most people will never know about, but that will probably be probably one of the, one of the best things we've ever done. So with that, I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson. I can think well of myself knowing that children who are yet unborn will have a place to put their disposable diapers. I'm a pretty good guy after all.
Would you have liked to have held those hearings for citing that second facility? No way.
So we have, we have a motion for approval. Any discussion? Yes, we have, I'm sorry, apologize for what I, my contribution to that. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Lambert, thank you.
Item F is the, is a request for approval of the August sixteenth, two thousand and eleven minutes.
Move for approval. Okay. Motion for approval, I'm sorry, your chairman's asleep at the switch up here. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item G is a request for, from ICATS for permission to accept Ora funds to convert four fleet vehicles to propane fuel. And Ben Garrison's here.
Good evening. Last Thursday, I was approached about an Ora grant. It was through the, uh, North Carolina Solar Center, which is part of NC State University. I figured since it was coming from NC State, it must be a good program, so. This, this grant, though, is for the propane conversion of, of fleet vehicles. Apparently, the funds were allocated to another source, and then they, there was some last-minute change, so these funds became, became available. And there's, uh, twenty-three thousand, two hundred dollars that would be available to Iredale County that would require no local match. With that money, we could put, uh, this equipment, do the conversions on four of our fleet vehicles. And what we're proposing is that we put it on four of our newest vehicles so that we can, can test them out. I was informed that we would have to pay for the equipment and the installation upfront and then ask for reimbursement at the completion of the project. And that would require us using fund balance to pay those, those costs initially. What we're asking, because these are Ora funds, we are going to ask, and, and a letter that I sent to them, we're asking that we do a sole-source bid, because the infrastructure is in place now in Iredale County, thanks to the Sheriff's Department for, for fueling. I'm, had a lot of questions about the project upfront, but the more I started looking into it and the potential savings for us, I think it's a very good, a very good project. Some of our vehicles put forty thousand miles a year. And at ten miles per gallon, we consume a lot of fuel. And if we can get some fuel savings off of vehicles, at some point, it might be worthwhile that we look at other projects to convert more of the, the fleet, uh, vehicles in our fleet. So I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Yeah, my, yeah, my question is, just because we got a propane, what, what, why is that better? You know, I mean, gas is three bucks a gallon. Yeah, but they sell propane, they don't give it away. I mean, do, do we know that it's going to cost? If, if, if you're running forty thousand miles per year and, and gas is three and a half bucks a gallon, I mean, you're spending about fourteen thousand a year for gasoline. Any idea how many, how many, uh, how much dollars in dollars, how much propane we would spend to run that same vehicle?
Well, on a thousand, and I, I've just found out about this, so I'm still gathering some information, but on a thousand gallons of fuel, you would use ten percent more on propane. So, but the cost of propane is around two, two-twenty-seven a gallon right now, as opposed to the net on gasoline at three oh four.
I know, but how many miles per gallon of propane do you get? What, what I'm saying is, I don't care, I, you know, what I want to know is, is the cost to operate the vehicle going to go down, and if so, by how much? And if, if you know it, I would like to know it too. If you don't know it, I'd rather you tell me you don't know it, and I'm not going to vote to do this until you do know it. Because what I'm not going to do is vote to convert them to propane and then have, have y'all come and say, "You need more money because you can't afford the propane." Because the, the, these vehicles aren't as efficient with propane as other vehicles are, or who knows?
Well-
Do you understand what I'm asking?
I'm, I understand, and I, I don't, I don't have the answer to that question right now, because I, I have, I found out about this on Thursday.
Right.
And Monday was a holiday, so I'm-
And you got to do this quick.
I have to do it quick, yes, sir.
You're only looking to convert four vehicles.
Four vehicles.
And you'd like to use that data as kind of a test to see where we stand at the end of the year.
As a, as a test, uh-huh. Uh, the Sheriff's Department has more experience with it than, you know, Mike would be a good, a good resource to-
I'm going to ask Mr. Phil, Mr. Phillips, Captain Phillips, he'd, he'd come on up and join this discussion, if you would.
I think addressing, uh, Mr. Robertson's questions, we're buying the propane at, at pipeline price, which is a lower price. Then we get, we don't pay any of the sales tax, and then we get a fifty cent tax credit per gallon. So we're paying somewhere around one-twenty, it's, it fluctuates, but somewhere around one-twenty a gallon for the propane. Now, I did check this past week, because they're doing an article on us for a newsletter next month, and they wanted some information from us as well. Last week I checked, and last month, we were down two weeks from pumping because the MS building was struck by lightning, and it knocked the system out. But for the two weeks that we pumped, I think we pumped right around three thousand gallons of propane, which I think we, we ended up paying about thirty-six hundred dollars, thirty-seven hundred dollars cost. If we had pumped that same amount of fuel, gasoline, it would have been around seventy-six hundred dollars. So we're saving quite a bit of money.
Are the miles per gallon similar, though, driving propane and gas?
Yes, what we're finding is that we're actually getting just about the same gas mileage with propane as we did with gasoline.
Now, Mr. Phillips, Mr. Garrison said a few minutes ago, "Use same-source supplier." You folks at Sheriff's Department don't have any problem hooking them up with the, the folks that were-
Absolutely not, as a matter of fact, in this money that they're getting, I got a call today from NC Solar. They've got thirteen thousand more dollars that, because we were planning to do some more cars because of the results that we're having, that they will give the Sheriff's Office to do additional cars. So the grant's going to go up. This will allow us, with each project, ICATS and us, we will get to choose, we'll each get another fueling station. So our proposal's going to be to put one, we already have one in the Troutman area. We're going to put one in the Statesville area, and then one on the north end area. So we're trying to cover the whole county with the fueling stations.
Our folks in the garage will be able to make this conversion, Mr. Smith?
Ben, uh, talked with John Williams, he might be able to answer that question a little bit better.
I talked with John, but then I had some, some discussions with the people. Because of the tight wind on this grant, the people that sell the equipment are willing to come in and install it themselves at the garage, so John won't have to get involved, because the conversion will be different.
Do the engines last longer with propane than to do with, uh, regular gasoline?
Well, we're, we're, we, we don't know that for a fact yet. We're still looking at that. Now, what we've been told, that because of the cleanness of the fuel, there's no emissions of any sort, that, that the maintenance of the vehicles will be less and the longevity of the engines will be longer. They've recommend, they've told us that we can go to ten thousand mile oil changes. We haven't done that yet. We're, we're going to increase hours, but I don't know that we're going to ten thousand miles at this point, so.
I run it ten now, and I shouldn't have, but I try to do it at five. I don't personally like propane, it's bad for the spark plug business. Spark plugs run forever on that stuff.
Yeah, that's what they say.
Okay. Any other questions, these gentlemen?
King of the Hill fans have got to be happy. Hank Hill selling propane and propane accessories, God's gas. A good thing to do.
Okay.
Is that a motion for approval, Mr. Robertson?
It's a motion to, to, to approve.
Okay. Motion for approval from Mr. Robertson. Any further discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, and I'd like to thank Captain Phillips for being here. We will probably have a lot more discussions.
Okay, thank you.
In Ben's defense, that it, it came up very, on, on very short notice, so, uh, he, he did a lot in a short amount of time. Uh, item H is a request from the Sheriff's Office. Captain Phillips is here to make that presentation.
Sheriff's Office is requesting a budget amendment to move thirty-five thousand dollars from the commissary money. And we will use that money to lease certain parts of the Ebenezer School Facility. The school system is allowing us to use that facility. We're going to use about seven thousand square feet. The charge that they're going to charge us for that area will be five dollars a square foot, which will be for thirty-five thousand dollars, and it'll be for a year's lease. We'll do it on a yearly basis. The areas that we're most interested in are several of the classrooms that we'll use for training, also the cafeteria that's already there, we'll use as a backup cafeteria for our jail, and also for any other incidents that may happen where we need to feed large quantities of people. Also, the gymnasium and the ball fields we'll use.
Any questions, Captain Phillips?
I don't have a question. I have a comment. I had the opportunity to tour the crime lab and just want to tell you what a great facility that is, and if-
Thank you.
If people have not seen what you guys are doing in there, it's, it's very commendable. And I really appreciated the, what you guys are doing for the, this county and other counties through the crime lab, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion for approval?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
Motion for approval from Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Captain Phillips. Okay. I believe that's everything under administrative matters. Announcements of vacancies occurring on boards and commissions. We have one announcement of a vacancy on the Lake Norman Marine Commission. Next is appointment to boards and commissions. Troutman Planning and Zoning Board ETJ, we have one announcement, uh, one appointment, excuse me. Troutman Board of Alderman recommends the reappointment of Steve Cash. I would nominate Mr. Cash. Okay. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I move we close the floor to nominations and appoint Mr. Cash by acclamation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Is there any unfinished business? Public comment period? No one signed to speak? New business. Does any other commissioner have any new business before I give you an update on mental health? I know y'all dying to hear it. You had this, uh, in your agenda. I'm just going to offer a, a couple of, uh, offer a couple of friendly amendments to the report that you have here. First, an explanation of a couple of things. The governance structure, that was probably the most passionately and most lengthy debate of the day. And there were a number of people who felt like it should be equal representation from all counties. Of course, the larger counties felt like it should be based on population. So what you have there is a, pretty much a hybrid system where it was agreed upon that each county would have at least two representatives, and then the rest of the representation would be based on population. The organizational structure, there's a tentative organizational structure in place, and it may be amended as we get prior to, to merger. And a merger committee has been formed. There'll be three from each, uh, LME, that's Mental Health Partners, Pathways, and Crossroads. And I'm proud to say that two people from Iredale County, Mr. Bill Fergus and Mr. Matt McCall, will be two of the three people representing Crossroads. So I think we're in pretty good, pretty good hands there. Under transition financing, there's an agreement that there will be full disclosure of any outstanding pending litigation before, uh, anything is finalized. And the startup costs are estimated to be about four point seven million dollars. That will be taken from the existing fund balances of the three organizations. So the county will not encumber any expense there. Let's see. The one thing that we have as far as proceeding with governance, we have set the timelines, but we have not set a schedule for when each part of the organizational structure is to occur. We're probably going to accomplish that at our, our next meeting. And, uh, excuse me, we appointed as interim director Mr. Rhett Melding from Pathways, and John Hardy is going to be with, uh, Community Relations. And our David Swan with Crossroads will be the clinical operations director. And those are all interim positions at this point, and they'll be agreed upon later. But the thing I wanted to make you aware of especially is, I knew you were going to look at that four point seven million dollars and you were going to say, "Whoa." But that will be taken out of the existing fund balances from those organizations. So I'll, uh, I'll entertain any questions you might have. We've got a, got a long way to go. We've made some progress, but we've got a long way to go. If there's no questions, we'll go to the county manager's report. Ms.?
Mr. Chairman, the only thing I have to report tonight is that last Thursday, our new Director of Planning and Development started with the county. And I wanted to introduce him. He was here today in the audience, and I asked him to stick around so I could introduce him. His name is Joey Raczkowski, and that's R-A-C-Z-K-O-W-S-K-I.
Good to see you, Joey.
I'm getting to be a pro at that. As you know, Joey came to us from Moore County. He was the planning director in Moore, but he's also been the planning director in Wilson County and in Pender County. Won't hold it against him that he's a down east kind of guy, but, um, he, uh, he's been here since Thursday. Uh, I know personally, I've, I've given him a laundry list of things, and he's been getting acquainted with the staff and with the county, so I just wanted to introduce him tonight.
Okay. Well, Joe, we certainly welcome you. This board looks forward to working with you. And I'm sure Mr. Smith can give you a lot of the history and, uh, we know where all the landmines are, so-
Yes, sir.
-we'll help you navigate through that as best we can.
Well, I appreciate that very much, and I look forward to working with you. This, this transitional planning environment, uh, where there's many challenges between urban growth and preserving the rural character, that's exactly where my experience has been, and I certainly look forward to those challenges. So, you know, I look forward to working with you.
Yes, sir. Well, Mr. Smith and I were speaking earlier. We already got some homework for you, so-
I understand, yes, sir.
We look forward to working with you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you. If I can back up one minute, uh, one thing I failed to, uh, mention on the crossroads. Mr. Smith, at some point, it's going to be necessary for me to call upon you and Ms. Blumenstein as far as, uh, the moving of fund balances and so forth when that merger comes. And I assume that Mr. Pope will be available to look over any legal documents that we may have at some point in that. Okay. Give me a little more peace of mind before I get too far ahead of myself. Okay, anything else from you, Mr. Manager?
No, sir.
Okay, at this point, I'll offer a motion. We go into closed session on attorney-client. General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven, A three, and personnel, General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven, A six. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
...
Having said that, all for a motion to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.